All right. Carla?
Here.
Joe Bozzi?
Here.
Chris Daggy? Absent. Sherry?
Here.
Bonnie? Absent. Margie? Present. Brian?
Here. Um, approval or amendments to the agenda?
Motion approved.
I'll second.
Motion, motion to approve the agenda and a second. Um, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
You guys?
They weren't here.
Motion and a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I wasn't here.
Yeah, she wasn't. Zoning Board, preface. Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by section twenty-seven point zero five of ordinance one twenty-six. There are five members on the ZBA. All of whom are present tonight. Three. Oh, we're missing an alternate. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will first have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and then a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chairperson, chairman has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation phase of the particular request before us. They changed this. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision here, she has the right to take it to certain court within thirty days of the decision. When your appeal hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. Okay, so we're gonna open up new business. First one of the night is Jay ZBA two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero five, the applicant at nine eight eight six Washington Street. Please come up, state your name and why you're here. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Cook, and I'm requesting the variances necessary to construct a privacy fence in what is considered my front yard. I think the variances are justified because of the unique location and characteristics of our property. Our property is located at the end of a dead-end street. The proposed fence would be located along a portion of a seven hundred and fifty-foot-long private driveway through the woods that ends up at our house. The fence would not obscure anyone's view. The only people who would actually see the fence would be my husband and I when we enter or exit our property. The proposed fence would face the woods at the rear of the adjoining properties on Lee Street. We're requesting a six-foot-high fence for safety reasons. A four-foot-high fence isn't sufficiently high to prevent a large dog from jumping over it and potentially attacking our small dogs. Such an attack occurred in April of this year when one of my dogs was, uh, when a dog ran out of the woods from an adjacent property and attacked my dog on the driveway. I'm requesting that the finished side of the fence face inwards towards our property because the neighbors on Lee Street wouldn't see the fence because of all the woods in the rear of their property. And we didn't think that the trees would mind facing, uh, the fence facing the woods. That's all I have to say. Do you have questions for me?
One second. Thank you for that. I will open up public comment regarding this issue. Anyone wish to speak? On this case?
If you would just have a second.
Well, last question's after everybody talks. I don't have any letters for this, right? I don't see any letters. Please state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chris Newman. I live at nine eight one one Lee Street. So as one of the neighbors directly affected by this fence, I don't oppose granting the two of the three variances for letting them build the privacy fence in their front yard. However, the third variance, do you put the finished side inward, should not be approved. It is an unreasonable request, and it's visually unappealing to myself and the surrounding neighbors. I have a direct line of sight to their road, so I will be able to see this unfinished side.
What was your address?
Nine eight one one Lee Street.
Did you say your name is Chris?
Yes.
Chris, so if it's in the woods, I guess I'm a little bit confused at how you can see.
So we have wooded property. From my property in the backyard, I can see our neighbors, that I can see them walk to get their mail. I can see their car leave and enter the property.
So it's not completely?
It's not completely obstructed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Charles Beach, at ninety-nine ninety-nine Lee Street. I'm the neighbor with Chris, and it's the same story for me. I don't disagree with the height and so on, but as for obstructing my view, I do think the nice side of the fence should face out per the ordinance. And I don't think a special variant should be given in that circumstance.
Can I get your name one more time?
Charles Beach.
Charles. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, we're gonna close public comment. Now, we might have some questions for you, ma'am. But you have to come back up. We can't hear you from over there. So with this fence, I don't know what it looks like, per se, but is there any way you can make it so it's a dogger fence to where both sides are, are? Nice? Is that one option?
Well, I mean, I, I'm not opposed. I mean, I did not know that they could see through, um, 'cause it's, at least, I would think, a couple hundred feet of woods, but I'm, won't argue the fact. Um, I'm not opposed to having the finished side face the woods. That's fine.
I guess my question is, is that, is, does this now, is there a fence that goes around the entire house now?
No.
So the dogs, a dog could get in, potentially. It's just, uh, 'cause I noticed it was three hundred and fifty feet, but the property was much bigger. So what, what's beyond the three fifty, is there another side?
There's a chain link fence on one of the neighbors.
Okay.
And then, um, beyond that chain link fence, there's woods, um, with a couple of other neighbors, but the, surrounding the rest of the property, it's vacant. It's vacant land.
It's open land?
Yeah.
So you're basically just trying to protect your animals?
Yes.
But it's not gonna connect to that other fence, you're saying?
Uh, no.
You said it's gonna be just off the driveway, right?
It's about twenty feet off the driveway, um, and twenty feet from our property line because we didn't want to interfere with any other trees.
How, how tall is that chain link fence? Is that a typical four foot?
Five feet?
I'm Robert Cook, her husband. It's just a normal chain link fence.
Just a little higher?
I'd say five feet.
No, it's not this high.
No?
So is it, is it important that it goes to that six-foot tall? That's what I'm getting at. I mean, do we have to go six-foot tall in the front yard where we typically allow that four foot?
Do we have to?
Yeah, what is the purpose of the six foot? Because if, if you're not enclosing?
Well, I'm sorry, now we didn't ask for a longer fence because the dogs with the chain link fence, when they stand up, their front paws are on the top of the fence. And the dog that, I was walking my dog down the driveway, and his dog just pumps out, pops out of the woods, a pit bull, and attacked our dog. Then last year, she got attacked on Washington by a rottweiler, walking the dog, so.
That should, that should never happen, you know, regardless of fence or no fence.
So now when I get my mail, I always take pepper spray with me.
So, um, if when you're, if you had the fence, if you're walking to get your mail, are you gonna be inside of the fenced area then?
Oh, yes.
So you won't have to be bothered by pepper spray, anything like that?
And the fence would be about ten feet from the driveway and about ten feet from the property line.
How much, how far from that fence will it be?
Pardon me?
How far from that fence will it be?
How far?
The driveway or the property line?
The property line to the fence is about ten feet.
There's still gonna be a gap.
It is because the driveway's not straight.
So you think just by that little bit of fence, I know it's a, it's a big?
It's not gonna affect us, it just give us a level of comfort. And if you see something, it's gonna come from you instead of behind you or onside you. 'Cause I'm walking down the driveway, and it's just ten feet and there's the woods, so. And when the dog popped out, so. Didn't have time to do anything.
Yeah, 'cause that's why, I guess why I was confused, I'm like, if you're not enclosing it, a dog can still get in there.
Well, we got twelve acres, you're not gonna enclose it, so.
It's beautiful.
I can't do everything.
Well, the only time, no, it's a beautiful spot.
It's reasonable.
Right.
It's, you know.
If the dog jumps over the four-foot fence, there's still gonna be a gap, he can't get over another four-foot fence.
Well, I want a six-foot.
I know, but if you had a four-foot between the other fence.
Is it for privacy? Maybe this'll answer your question. Is it for privacy as you're walking that the dog doesn't see it in, in the six-foot high?
It doesn't go into woods. Even when it chase a deer, it stops.
The other, the other dog.
But yes, it's for privacy and it's for safety. So yes. And we know it's not gonna absolutely prevent a future attack, but?
You always have a twist.
It will minimize the opportunity and give us more time to react.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I ask one question on the building? Not, can you guys, you guys stop for a minute? Let's bring Gary up and just. I'm gonna ask one question for the building inspector.
Okay.
Official inspectors.
I think.
Should we, should we?
Gary, did you see a, a picture of this fence?
Uh, yes, I did.
I mean, can they flip it easily? I mean, is it not?
Any fence could be flipped. You know, it's not the style that would be good side, both sides. But, uh, in this, I, I met with this couple and understand what their issues are, and, and the reason why they're looking for the six foot is maybe not to make those dogs aware that they're walking, that they're there. At a four foot, they may then see it, and the dogs may react, and that was their concern. It, yeah, the uniqueness of this property is, you know, the depth of it is, is ten-plus acres. There is no one else affected by it except for the people on Lee Street that have to look through a wooded area. But, you know, dogs, when they see something moving, uh, they may be running towards it, and I think the six-foot height is what would help them achieve maybe just to be stealth through that area and not be seen by the dogs.
That's what I thought. That's what I was, I just found your opinion, that's what I was thinking too. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You have to fill out that, this for any motion.
Yeah.
I was over there, I took pictures, and I didn't want the property, but you could see that a proposed spot's where for the fence.
We have a little question here that we have to fill out as we do motions, so that's what they're all doing right now to figure out, okay? Takes us just a smidgen of a second to put it in writing to be able to do it. And obviously, you're aware that there's multiple different fences out there. And when I say dogger, you know, I, I just used to, it looks the same on both sides, and it gives you. That's it. It might not give you what you want, though. I didn't, I didn't think you did, but I'm just saying, if you like a good side, the dogger, they get a good side, you get a good side. But I wanna make sure you get. Yep, I, I think that's what they're working on. I can't make a motion.
Yeah.
All right, who's up? Answer your questions, Jim? As I interrupted you.
What?
As I interrupted you.
No, good.
'Cause I, I thought that six foot was gonna be the. It's a little different if you were opposed to one of them. Yes.
Go for it. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve. Practical difficulty is safety and privacy. The unique situation is their location, it's at the end of a dead-end road, it's a private drive, um, it's not self-created, you know, they haven't done anything to create the situation that they're in. And substantial justice would be they're not blocking any views, not creating any hardship for the neighbors. The neighbors are here, they're okay with it, they just wanted to make sure aesthetically it looks nice on their side, and I would agree with that. And it's not contrary to the ordinance.
Carla, that is one of them, 'cause they wanted the good side facing their property.
Right, so they're flipping it, so.
No, you would have to tell them that you're.
Then you would have to, according to the ask, we would like for you to make sure that the good side.
Yep, yep.
Right, the finished side is on your neighbors, in your neighbor's view, okay?
Yep, thank you.
And then the ordinance is for a four foot, I believe, and we're gonna grant the ordinance for a six foot. I believe that, that's, you know, fair and just according to what your practical difficulty is.
Second?
I'll second.
Yep. Yes.
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 And a fence in, in the front yard. As proposed, right?
Yes.
Gary? Good?
You okay with all that?
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the variance for the front fence at six-foot tall, but with a good side facing?
The neighbors.
The neighbors. Okay? Sherry? All right.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Margie? Yes. Chris? Not here? Carla?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Bonnie? And Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
Granted. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Make sure you say something to the ordinance, you know, that, about the dogs, too, you know, to the, the township, and maybe they can help you out a little bit with that. I know. You never know. I know it's, it's, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Start the other one in one second, she's just writing this, writing this down. Does like dogger give you, I haven't seen it in a long time, does it give you double protection? Does, I mean, or can you see kind of through it on the angle? Ah, gotcha. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, you're right. Why you put dogger on both sides? It's only two dollars, seventy-five cents apiece. Good? Standing it up?
Well, not yet.
What do you mean?
Well, I didn't finish this.
Oh, okay. It's gotta be done tonight, though.
Oh, I'm gonna do it tonight.
All right, so we're gonna open up the next case at Jay ZBA two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero six at six one four zero South Channel Drive. Representative, come up, state your name, address, please.
Douglas Caltz, sixty-one forty South Channel Drive, Harson Island. So I'm proposing to build a two-story pole barn on my property. I can't have a basement. I moved from Leonard, I had a finished walkout, thirty-five-hundred-square-foot basement. I have a lot of taxidermy animals, and I have nowhere to put them in my new house 'cause I don't have a basement. So I'm proposing to build a two-story barn, and I want ten-foot ceilings because I have moose and elk and red sag and grizzly bears and all that stuff. So that's, that's kind of what I'm looking for, so.
I'd be afraid to go in there.
They're all good.
I mentioned I'm Michael Ben Lamenti, I work with Doug and for Doug. The building itself is compliant in height and size, it's just the variances, the three feet inside the building, so we're not looking to be taller than the ordinance will allow. It's just the walls from a seven-foot to a ten-foot within the building.
Within the structure, so you can't really tell from the outside, you just see inside?
Totally compliant from the outside.
No bathrooms proposed, no living?
There is a bathroom proposed in the garage on the first floor, but nothing, no living upstairs.
I asked for one, and when we talked to Gary, he said that he'd rather I don't put one up there for future, I could put a shower and stuff, which I told him I wasn't going to, but I guess I'm okay with one downstairs and not upstairs, so. It will have a bar and a, and a furnace room up there, because I have to keep the animals, gotta be humidity and stuff, the animals will fall apart if they're up there in the, in the heat and stuff, so I will have, you know, heat, so there will be plumbing for a sink for a bar and for the furnace, but nothing else, so.
And a balcony?
Yep, I'm putting a balcony, 'cause I'm on the South Channel, it's the reason I bought the property, so I can watch the freighters and stuff go by, so just, so people walk outside and on the balcony, but it's gonna be a, a day, a day, a place, a man cave type thing, so.
I noticed all the transom windows.
Those are, the, the architect actually drew them on, and I'm not putting them on there because I wanna hang animals on the wall, so too many windows are gonna be a problem for me. It was, it was nice look that he put on there, but I'm not gonna put the transit windows or anything in, so.
Right.
It was just his proposal to make it look nice, which, it does look nice, but like I say, I need more, more wall space. You know, you hang a moose or an elk on a six-foot-eleven ceiling, the head would be down here, obviously, so. So I'm looking for the ten-foot ceilings to be able to hang my animals on, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak? I'm gonna open up public comment, sorry. Anyone wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Neil Stonebeck, and I am the next house down river from Mr. Caltz, who has turned out to be, you pay your taxes?
I did.
He's a taxpayer in the township, and he's turned out to be a very, very good neighbor. I look at, I will look at this building that he's putting up, and I have absolutely no objection to it. And I'm just here to support him, and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, so no jealousy there, right?
Did he invite you over to the bar? But I'm one of them.
I go in his house and drink.
All right, so he's got a unique situation over there. Anyone else wish to speak? I'm gonna close public comment.
And Gary?
You wanna talk to Gary?
So you're bringing Gary up?
Yeah, come on up, Gary. I don't have any, oh. I thought we were gonna talk before. This is for, all right, hang on, sorry. An unofficial.
Letter from Bob and Susan Bryson. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals, Bob and Susan Bryson would like to convey the support for the variance of Doug Caltz. Am I saying it right? Okay. As we are the neighbors to the north of his residence.
Thank you. Now I'll close public comment. Sorry. Attic, we love it.
Well, I mean, this is a huge piece of property for being on the water. It's almost one-point-seven acres. Is it? Am I missing something?
It's three and a half to land and five-point-eight with a water.
There you go. There you go. So realistically, I don't know what you saw in the packet, but I probably saw a lot more of the, of the animals that he has that he wants to put up. This won't affect absolutely anybody. It's away from the water, it's away from everything. You know, there's water all around them, and, um, I would just recommend that we would say that, you know, the, the second floor would be day use only, storage and day use, and keep it simple as that, because we are creating an above seven-foot ceiling, so the potential is there. But if we have it in the wording on the approval, that it's day use and, uh, storage only would be helpful down the road.
Thank you. Right?
Yeah, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you.
So I have a question for Mr. Caltz. So the balcony upstairs?
Yes.
What's the reason for the balcony if it's not gonna be living space?
Uh, just for people to go outside because of my animals, I won't let anybody smoke in my building because you have to send animals out and have them clean and stuff. And like I say, I'm on the South Channel, so people can sit outside and watch the freighters go by and stuff like that, is the reason for the balcony.
Could they reasonably go downstairs and outside?
Well, my boathouse sits in front of this building between the South Channel and this building, so you can't see the water unless out of the second story.
Unless you're up high.
But having a balcony doesn't necessarily mean living space either.
But potentially, I think it adds to the reasonability that it could, could be.
Yes or no? But in this piece of property, I mean, it's, it's not gonna really.
This is my forever home. I've told Gary, we've had several meetings with Gary, I'm not moving, I'm gonna die in this house, so it's not gonna ever be rented out, or nobody's ever gonna, I have a three-bedroom, master bedroom house, there's only two of us living in it, so I would have no reason to let anybody live in my barn, and I wouldn't want them to, you know, so. And like I say, I have probably two-hundred-plus animals to put up there, so there's no room for anything else, basically, you know, so.
We just, we just get a lot of variant, or?
High class.
Variances for the second floor, and?
We don't do so.
Since we have animals in this one, we get ten feet, if we go shopping another one, we get eight feet. If the guy's too tall, it's seven and a half feet. If you have an animal, you get ten feet.
Right. No, I understand where you're coming from, but like I say, if, you know, my elk.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Antlers are this high, so six-foot-eleven is not gonna cut it for me, you know, so. But that's the reason for the ten-foot ceilings, so.
Is there a possibility to put the animals downstairs?
I, I have a, I don't know, Mike made a, a packet for you guys, I have excavators and skid steers and tractors and stuff that are all gonna be going down in the basement.
So these are your talking toys right here? These are your talking toys, I said?
Yeah, yeah. All my little toys are going downstairs, and the animals are going upstairs.
Are you, um, getting rid of the front part, the garage in the front?
The little barn?
Yeah.
No, no, I don't plan, I'm, I'm, I wanna side it to match the rest of my house because it's like tan siding, and I put, I have a cedar house, and the boathouse, actually, that Mike, the builders, uh, came up with this new siding, it almost looks like cedar, but it's steel. It looks beautiful, everybody's been complimenting me so far on it, but, and I wanna just match that barn in the front the same way, so.
Right, but you could store stuff in the barn, too, right? Your toys and stuff?
Yeah, but it's twenty-four by thirty, I think, so my excavator and my, and my skid steer and stuff will not fit in there, my zero turn and my little buggy goes in there, but I wouldn't be able to put my other stuff in there, it's not, it's not tall enough, it's only got seven-and-a-half-foot ceilings in it, so I can't put the excavator and stuff in there, so. It's only got seven-and-a-half-foot ceilings in it, so I can't put the excavator and stuff in there, so. And I don't want my, my neighbors to have to look at my equipment, so I wanna, I wanna put it in the insides, you know?
It's a beautiful piece of property.
It's one of the nicest on the South Channel. That's what I went after. It wasn't for sale.
You're close.
I begged and poked at it. I begged and poked at the guy like 10 times. He hung up on me. He didn't wanna sell it to me, but I kept pestering him till he sold it to me, so.
How, um, how wide is the balcony gonna be?
It's 10 or 12 feet. Whatever. I only, I think there's only 16 feet between the boathouse and the thing, so it'll be, it'll be less than that. It'll be 12 or 14. Just not to put a lawn chair on and stuff like that. Nothing, nothing real big.
So did you say you're eliminating these windows on the balcony side?
Yeah, the transit windows. There'll be a door wall and two windows on that end facing the South Channel.
So these, these will remain?
Those will be there, the upper windows. The transit windows will, will not be there.
These will be gone.
Yep. Like I say, they look nice, but...
So you're allowed eight feet?
What's that?
You're allowed seven feet?
Six-foot-eleven, I think, is the township.
Six-foot-eleven, and you want 10?
I want 10, yes. Like I say, if you had an elk and a moose, like I say, you know, I'd have to mount them on the floor to put them in a six-foot-eleven ceiling because they're about four and a half feet tall altogether, so.
But is that, is that enough justification? Get these a lot.
We see a lot of these, and...
The guy, the guy in two houses up the river wanted eight. He went back there and redesigned it.
What's that?
A guy, two houses upriver from you, wanted it eight foot, and he went over there in that room and talked and redesigned his plans.
To what?
Seven.
Like I say, even eight foot won't even work for me. Like I say, the basement, I had a 10-foot finished ceiling in it, and I could hang my animals in that. 12 would be better, but I would be over the, be over the heights for that, the means height, so.
The bigger, the bigger animals, would they fit inside the house?
No.
And the wife says no?
Well, they've been in the house before, my other house, but yeah, it got a little carried away. But like I say, I have a large number of...
No, it doesn't look that at all.
I had geese hanging from the ceiling and stuff, and it got a little carried away, so. She's not against it. She's a hunter, too, but there's many animals I have that I can't put them in the house. So like I say, if I, if I could've put a basement in, they would be my basement on the island, but, you know, I can't have a basement, so.
It's funny how the Rensen can have a basement, and we can't.
Right.
Can't figure that out yet.
They probably got some good sub pumps.
But I just look at it, then I go fishing. I'm like, how can they have a basement if you can't build one on the water?
I actually put a seam service from Detroit Thermal into the Rensen, into the underground garage, which is part of the basement. It was very wet there. Very wet, yep.
This would not be out of place in this neighborhood. Other people have this in the neighborhood. This is a unique piece of property. This isn't Anchor Bay Drive. This isn't to where we're, you know...
I understand the property and everything, but I wouldn't be able to see it, but it's just...
Yeah, it's not blocking anybody view for the river or anything. It's in, it's in the front, so. It's behind my, I have a center canal on the property, and it's, it's behind that, so. Wouldn't be blocking anybody view other, wouldn't be able to see the neighbors also to the neighbor, but...
If we put in it as a day use and storage only, it'll never be living.
But think about the ones that we've denied height on, and now we're giving him height, and he can put a balcony out there, so... Is that gonna cause some...
And he still has windows.
Right. Would you be opposed to eliminating that balcony?
If that's what it takes to get it. I mean, I really want the balcony, but, I mean, if that's a sticking point, I guess I could eliminate it. I would still put windows on that side to see the South Channel.
Windows are fine, but the balcony, to me, creates just us saying, okay, it's okay for you, but it's not okay for everybody else to do even an eight-foot or nine-foot ceiling. We're gonna give you a variance, but then we're also allowing you the balcony, and then there's gonna be plumbing and everything else, so... It may not be your end result that you're gonna have someone living there or anything like that, but it's set up like that, if that makes sense.
Well, like I say, Gary didn't want me to run, have a toilet because you needed three-inch or bigger for a toilet, so I'm allowed a two-inch for a sink and a furnace condensate, so.
Yep.
There'll be no other plumbing up there but the two-inch, so. Like I say, there's, I mean, I'm, I'm not, there's a lot of place on the island that have upper decks with balconies on them that are all over. I've, I've looked at 15 or 20 houses on the island that were for sale, and they have upstairs in their boathouse or their, their barn with balconies on it, you know, so.
I agree with you. I said, I completely agree with you. They're definitely out there, and we hear that every time, too, but we're not policing it.
I told Gary I would sign an affidavit. I offered, I offered Gary a key. If he wants to come anytime at 3:00 in the morning to see if somebody's living there, he's welcome. I'll offer you guys a key. I'm not, my intentions are not, nobody's ever gonna live up there. It's a day use man cave is what it is, so. And like I say, I just would like to enjoy, to walk out on the balcony and enjoy the South Channel, watching the freighters and the boats go by. It's the only reason the balcony's on there, so.
Do you have a balcony at your house?
Nope, I just, well, it's a ranch, so no. I have a patio out, out, facing the South Channel, but that's the wife's house, the barn's mine, so.
Does she have a she shed? That's all I wanna know.
Yes, she does. She has a little she shed for her lawn furniture, so, yep. Like I say, I'll, I'll sign an affidavit guaranteeing, I'm gonna live there till I'm dead. You know, I can't guarantee with the next person. I mean, hopefully it's 20 or 30 years from now, you know, but I'm not gonna ever let anybody live in there or rent it out or anything. That's not my intention. So like I say, I have a beautiful, Mike built me a beautiful three-bedroom, three-master bedrooms. There's two of us living in the house, so.
It's a beautiful home.
I can accommodate a lot of guests in the house. I don't need to put them in my barn, you know, and the people I bought it off of actually want to split the property with me and keep half, and I said, no, I'm not sharing. I want the whole thing or nothing, you know, so.
No, is the man cave still considered living space?
No.
No?
No, not really. I mean, if there was a bathroom and, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, yeah, he's gonna have a bar, but...
The four used to have two of the three, you know, bedroom, kitchen, or kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, bathroom for living.
There's gonna be a furnace room, and that's it, up against the roadside of the building for a furnace? Because like I say, I have to keep it air-conditioned because if they get humidity, the fur will fall right off the mounts and stuff.
And then you mentioned a bar, so the bar will have a sink, obviously.
Yeah, that's why, and Gary approved, told me I could have a two-inch going up there. If I rented a three-inch for a toilet, which I wanted, then I could put a shower and bathtub or whatever, which he's allowing me to have a two-inch, so.
He's still gonna have a drain line no matter what up there.
Yeah, the furnace, like I say, I'll have to have a drain anyway, so.
It's a top one?
Yeah, it's really... My concern is if something happened to you a year from now, and your wife, and somebody moved in there with the balcony and stuff, they could always convert it.
Right.
You guys, the balcony has no play in it.
The house is 3,500 square foot with three master en suites in it, so, I mean...
It doesn't. The balcony has no, no play. It's not over water like the last one wanted to put a bathroom. On his plan, had a bathroom over a boathouse. That's why that got denied.
That's a view.
It's a view. He can look over top of his ranch. It's a beautiful piece of property. I would want a balcony myself.
Yeah, I know.
I put the balcony all the way around the South Channel. But it's not any way to, to, it's not against the ordinance to put a balcony. We're not voting on a balcony. We're voting on...
Right, but the practicality of three foot.
Three foot, that's it. Just look at that, girl.
And within a compliant building, too, again.
Correct. That's, you can't look at the balcony part of it.
It's over 150 feet.
He can put a balcony on it right now.
It's not anywhere near the property. It's 150 feet from property line, so.
No, it's got, it's got nothing to do with the uniqueness of the property or anything. It's just the granting the rights for you to three feet over before we've...
Correct.
That's all it is. How do we, what words should we put down for that?
Right, well, it's not...
We're putting like a fake overhang in the middle just to break the building up because it would be, you know, the wall. I don't wanna look at a big wall, so we're putting like a fake overhang in the middle of it just to break it up, so aesthetically, it looks good for the neighbors and stuff, so.
No, it's, it's not even that. It's just a...
And I get what you're saying. It's not about the balcony, but it is about the balcony if you combine the two. So if I'm giving him three feet and he's got a balcony and a sink, and like she said, well, what if the person after him then turns it into Airbnb? I mean, you know what I mean? I mean, you know what I'm saying? Like, it, it has a potential after the fact.
But everything does. They put Airbnbs in 10-by-10 sheds now, so everything could be Airbnb. I'm just looking at, like, he can put a balcony on any building he wanted to.
I agree. I 100% agree.
You know what I mean? So that should not be a, a thing to deny this.
It's not the thing to deny. It's the thing that if there's three extra feet and a balcony combined, is that gonna create a problem later?
How about this? What if, what if you didn't even have it on the drawing right now? What if you didn't even see a drawing? You just came in here and said, hey, I just wanna go to 10-foot ceiling.
I'd say, okay.
Then that's what you gotta vote because you, you, you can't tell them what to do different.
But I see that. I see it. I know it's there.
Like I told, I told Gary, you know, I could've, I came to him with a full set of plans of my intentions. I could've told the township I was building the cold storage building, and after everybody left, I could've done whatever I wanted. That's not the type of person I am. I showed him exactly what I was intending on doing. The only problem he had was a bathroom upstairs, so I eliminated it. Took it off the plan.
Yeah, I'm not really so concerned about you, to be completely honest. I'm concerned about the previous people that have been here. I mean, honestly.
100%.
So, I mean, I, it's, I'm not trying to be comical. I'm, I'm saying, like, we have denied people before, so I need to make it make sense in order for me to say it's a great idea. I mean, I realize he has animals and things like that, but is that really not self-created? I mean, there's, there's a lot of variables in this, in this mix, and I'm, I'm okay with it, but I'm not okay with the balcony because I feel like then it could be misconstrued by someone else that he's gonna do something that we didn't allow.
No.
So it's not you?
Yeah, no, I know. But I could, I could eliminate the balcony, and next year I could put a balcony on it, you know?
But then you would be doing it after we already said you're approved as a day story.
You could put something up there, too.
I'm sure you what I wanted right from the beginning.
I get it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I understand you're trying to be, do what's right and do...
And like I say, I live on, I bought the property because it's on the South Channel. I wanna be able to go outside, and like I say, I wouldn't, I don't let anybody smoke in my building because I have to send animals out and have them cleaned. So if you wanna smoke, go out on the balcony instead of going downstairs and outside.
I don't want people smoking in my house.
That's more or less the reason for the balcony.
And it's not even because of my old English bulldog. I don't even, I just don't like the smell.
I do understand about the animals. I actually worked at the taxidermy, and they are huge. That's why I asked if the bigger ones could've went in the house or, like the moose and the bear and...
Yep, they've been in storage for four years. I miss my animals. I haven't seen them in four years. I moved out here in 2020, and they've been in storage up in Metamora since 2020, so.
Wow, that must've been pricey.
It's getting real pricey, yeah, so.
All right, Brian, well...
Motion.
All right, let me think of this. What's the, what'd be practical difficulty? It's gotta be on this sheet. Doesn't have any place to store his animals?
No basement.
No basement?
Just like anyone wants a big garage.
I don't see the practical difficulty, but I do see the unique situation, I guess.
Well, he can't, can't attach that barn to his house and make everything else work with sub packs and stuff. He's got flood plain somewhere in that property, I'm sure, because he's surrounded by water in multiple areas.
Yeah, it's on the other side of water, yeah.
You know, maybe, maybe he's a, um, not a, not a hoarder, but a, what is the guy?
Collector?
Maybe he's a prepper and needs a lot of stuff. And he lives in, you know?
I like orange stuff.
I like that.
I like a lot of stuff. I like orange stuff.
You have a lot of it.
I've just seen this neighborhood, and it's definitely not gonna be out of character. Definitely not gonna be in any way, shape, or form.
There's nothing really to do with it.
There's houses around it that have balconies.
I know that. It's just, if someone else comes in there and says they have animals every time, that's all I'm seeing.
Tell them to prove it. I got pictures to prove it, so.
No, I mean, you have one guy that was almost seven foot tall.
Maybe that's what we have pictures to prove.
Literally, he was like 6'7" or something like that. Remember that? The guy who was so tall? It was your friend.
Like I say, I would've asked for 12, but we would've been over the means height, so I would've had to go for a height variance on top of it. So I can make 10 work, but, you know, I had them in my basement. I had 10-foot ceilings, and it worked, but, you know, like I say, the moose and the elk and the red sag are, they're the big problems, you know, and the bear, obviously, is...
How big's the red stag?
It, uh, it scored 340, like I said.
Neil, how big is this red stag?
He hasn't seen it yet. I got pictures.
I haven't seen it. It's been in storage.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
Actually, that one's not even mine.
Gary, is his taxes gonna, his taxes are gonna reflect this being 10-foot, right?
He got a red stag.
Taxes.
Taxes.
He did have a red stag.
I thought you were talking about an elk.
No. He has a red stag, isn't he?
I remember Gordon Bower's background.
I asked you what they think.
But he doesn't have a building like that.
I have the locals.
And when you're a professional homeowner like that, it's...
I get it, I get it. What is that, a unique situation?
I forgot to add it.
Do you have these taxidermy animals?
Yeah.
Unique situation, I would say, because he lives on Harson's Island. And if he had 10 acres somewhere else where he would normally live, he would be able to put whatever he wants up.
Yeah, if you look at some of the pictures that I gave to Mike for that booklet, I had a gamble rope barn in K-Pac that had 10-foot ceilings, and I had all my animals up there, and with a balcony overlooking my pond.
You lived in K-Pac?
I did, for 27 years.
I probably know one of your kids, if you have kids.
Yep, yeah, they're 37 and 36, so.
Uh, yep, probably went to school with my kids.
Yep. I lived on Terry Road first, south of town by the Bell River, and then I moved up on Netney Road, and Martin is where I, I was there for 18 years, I think, up there, behind Tasha's, kinda kitty corner from Tasha's place up there.
Oh, yeah, yep. I lived on Sheridan, by Tremblies.
When you say that would be the unique situation, would be storing these unique taxidermy animals? I mean, that's really why he wants it for 10-foot, isn't it? That's the whole purpose of it.
My question is, what's not self-created?
Uh, we only need to approve it.
Make a motion to approve it. And see where it lies. If you're making a motion to deny it, it comes in with other stipulations as well. You put it all in writing. But know, you know, your answers are approving or disapproving it. I'm not saying not, you know, but you, he gave you everything in here.
Right.
I can't tell you what I would say if that was my piece of property. I can't tell you what I would say if that was my piece of property, you know what I'm saying? But all I do know is a unique situation, it's Harson's Island.
Yeah, but we've had Harson's Island before.
Have we?
Height in the.
Yes.
Just recently, yeah.
I'll tell us the walls on that, so I don't have to look. Sixteen?
The downstairs is sixteen and the upstairs is ten. And like I say, I'm putting like a two-foot overhang around the middle, just so you're not looking at a, you know, a straight wall to break it up, just for aesthetic looking, so my neighbors don't yell at me, so. And like I say, it would look strange, just having a straight wall, look like a factory, so like I say, I had the architect draw up a fake overhang. It's not gonna serve any purpose other than to break the wall up, so.
That's the only one I can think of, is the unique situation. I don't know if I can.
This is unique. It can be a day use.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
I have to agree it's the unique situation.
Well, you can say it's, you know, not contrary to certain laws, you can every case is gonna be opposed to it.
Is there a possibility to go just a hair lower than that?
Agree if you.
Like I say, ten's pushing it out of the ground right to all, but like I say, that I would have had to go for a height variance, because I'd be over the means height.
Is he gonna have living up there?
Like I say, if you've seen him in real life, like I say, an elk, you know, the head, the antlers is probably three and a half, four foot. So if you got six foot eleven, you're gonna be two feet off the floor.
There's a red stag and stuff that they're a taxidermy. They did a nine foot bear, standing bear.
I am gonna, I'm saying, if I will motion to approve, I'm asking you. It's a hard one.
You can say as drawn, as written, as stated. I mean, you still, you know, you still gotta have a second, and they might help you with the second too, or anyone that was gonna second might help you with verbiage. You know, this is a great day use, storage, never to be living. He could have easily, you know, designed that to add it later, too. Now he's just gonna get taxed on it right from the gate, versus not taxed.
Yeah, they won't miss the tax.
Well, I'm not really interested in how the taxes are ready, so. In the same token, you know, that's, if it's should be considered living, then, you know, it's not attic, so I don't know why it wouldn't be taxed a little bit different. And everybody that we say is attic, they're not getting taxed on that, and how do we know they're not ripping the ceiling out and putting it up to eight foot in two seconds? It's the same thing he could have done on this, for sure.
Like I said, I was trying to be upfront and honest with you people, you know, with Gary and everybody, you know, so.
But, you know, it's also not over the water either. If it ever does become living, it's not, you know, bathroom over the water, that could be an issue. He didn't throw any red flags, I mean, yeah, he put, you know, in his application, but Gary shot that down.
That doesn't sound good in the hearing aids.
So you could never attach this to the house and make this building?
No, it's.
Why couldn't you?
To cross the canal, cross the bridge. A hundred and fifty feet away?
So does every house have a canal? Does everyone, every house have a canal that, you know, riverfront plus a canal on Harson's Island?
No, not everywhere.
So it's pretty unique, right?
I have two side canals.
If he didn't have that canal, he could have put this right on his house like other people have, and he wouldn't be here. At all.
There's your practical difficulty.
That's how I look at it. He would not be here at all, if he could.
Yeah, I have two side canals and a center canal, so I'm surrounded.
That's what I'm saying, it's not just, it's not just Harson's Island, but he can't do what he wants to do and attach it to the house. Does that make more sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess we should use that one.
Because it's the same thing, if he had twenty acres, he could put it, he could put it next to his house and probably be more enjoyable, and have a bathroom, and make it living if he wanted to, and have a balcony. And shoot deer off his backyard. Now he can only shoot geeks off his lawn.
I bet you guys didn't know he had a Canadian.
I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, I look at his piece of property. If I, you know what I mean, we're, this is a unique situation.
It's unique, it was just about the other feet, right? If that canal, that, maybe that's the right way. Right to bring that up, that canal.
Yeah, so when we bought the property, we were over at Neil and Lily's place, and my wife was asking where to put a garden about deer. And Lily goes, there's no deer down here. Well, he has a grading bridge.
Right.
I have a wood bridge, well, we're building the house, every day there was deer tracks around my new house, I'm like, we put the garden in, within four hours, there was four deer, my garden eating everything. And then, you know, my wife goes, well, put it on the island. I go, they cross that wood, I got a wood bridge, so they walk across that bridge like it's nothing, they don't care, you know, so.
I have fruit trees and they don't make it without cattle fence around them.
But it's, like I say, he has a grading bridge.
I try not to persuade you. This is a great answer to the community.
I plant apple trees, they'll be gone in one day if I plant them on my property.
Put cattle fence around them, they'll be fine. No, no, just a circle around the base of the tree. That's what we had to do, like forty-something fruit trees.
I know exactly what he would do, you know, if he didn't have that canal. He'd put it right to his house. That's why I asked the builder.
That's what Neil did, with that.
Hundred percent.
Full attached big garage, huge game room up above.
So how is it not self-created, though, basically?
Because he didn't put the canal there.
Yeah, okay.
So you heard us earlier, we have to fill this form out every time.
Totally ashamed, totally ashamed.
So.
It's.
And it's just for look back, in case anybody questions, or, you know, the why behind it is right there.
If I were to put a basement in my house, would I get a nosebleed going in my house? I built a range for a reason, to stay level, I don't wanna have to go up to get my house, you know, but.
Okay, I'm gonna make an motion to approve for the practical difficulty due to the canal, he can't attach to the house, so it's limited due to, you know, for storage and, I mean, for the inability of being able to attach to the house, you're unable to do what you wanna do. So the unique situation is you are using it for storage and day use, and it's unique because of you storing these hunting and taxidermy, hunting trophies and animals, so you need the space, the proper space, and you need the tempered environment to store them, so it's kind of unique in that situation, and that's pretty much why you're here. And it isn't self-created due to the canal, kind of limits you from doing what you wanna do. And the substantial justice is that there are similar properties, just like your house in the neighborhood, and you're not affecting anybody else there, and and this will not impact any other neighbors, so.
A second.
Wait.
Oh, I said day use and storage.
She said it. Were you listening?
With the stipulation.
Oh, with the stipulation that it's going to be used for day use and storage.
Absolutely.
Okay?
And never living space.
I have no problem signing anything you want, you know, say that's day use only.
And we used said you were giving us all keys, so.
Totally said it, it's on record. This is all recorded.
I live on an island.
Carla, did you second it?
I did, I seconded it.
All right, so we got a motion to approve as drawn, correct? Um, in a second, let's roll call, please.
Margie, yes. Chris Staggie is not here. Carla?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Bonnie, not here, and Brian?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sorry for the.
Nice writing on this, whoever did this.
Yes, you put a lot of work into that.
A key, I thought it was a key.
I got it on the truck, I could get you one.
I have like a keychain with my neighbor.
What color key would you like?
Oh, nice. Thank you very much. Didn't have to do that.
You didn't have to do that.
Oh, boy.
Assistant Mike, you know, my company name, Adam.
Is that your company?
Very nice, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you, thank you so much.
Good luck tomorrow, buddy.
Yes, good luck tomorrow.
Let me get those.
Bye, thank you. Well, we'll be praying for you. Wow.
I don't like to be a geek.
But.
Well, we'll be praying for you.
Yeah, no drinking, ain't for.
We can come over and drink.
She's got, you guys, she's writing stuff down, so we can, we got like two minutes.
Sorry to bother you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, good luck.
I like this, that I can just flip through and I got everything.
Thanks, Ryan. I've written all mine, just to reiterate.
I can't read it off my phone sometimes.
Well, it's hard to read even here, like I said, I don't get that signal.
That was the other guy's house?
Yeah. No, this isn't Neil's. Yeah, that's his boathouse.
That's beautiful.
I lost that by five grand, too. I didn't want to tell Neil that. He told me that after, he goes, I should have just paid the five grand. All right, come on, come on, come on. Let me picture the guy here. The one. Well, I see at the end, yeah. Are you all good?
Motion to approve, Carla, second, that's all right, and then using for day use, storage.
Okay, that's on there, day use and stor-, yeah.
Yep, day use and storage.
All right, perfect. All right, so now we're gonna go to uh, the next one, Jay ZBA twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven, Apken at seventy thirty, middle channel. Thank you for being patient.
Thank you for laughing at us, awesome. They're gonna come back next month, they're just like.
Just for that or human value.
So my name's Diane Sullivan, this is my husband, Rich Sullivan. We're full-time, year-round residents on Harson's Island. We've been there full-time since twenty twenty. We built our house that we live in, in twenty eighteen is when we got our certificate of occupancy, and we're here today because we're asking to be allowed to have three accessory buildings. And so I thought I'd put together this summary sheet, just because the other one is a lot, kind of wordy, and I wanted to just kind of go through the key points, and then we can go through questions if you have questions. So when we originally submitted our drawings for building our house, we did include a future garage to complete the property. The house was designed, assuming that we were gonna have that storage function in that garage. And of course, as you heard in the last one, there's no basements on the island, we have a crawl space, but there's no basements for storage or hobby space we had planned to put out in the garage. My husband's a woodworker and I'm an artist, and we like to do things that are dirty and messy that we can't do in the house. The garage was delayed, as you know, we had a lot of flooding out there, we had a lot of water in our yard. Covid, labor shortage, lumber prices, we just kept pushing off the garage, because, you know, it just wasn't the right time to build it. So in the meantime, we retired and moved out there full-time, so then we had all of our stuff from our mainland house. Even though this was our primary house, we had stuff in the other house from raising the kids and had to move all that out. And decided that we needed to add a twelve by sixteen shed to help manage some of that stuff in the meantime, since we couldn't build the garage. That was a permitted shed. And this garage has become necessary now, because we are retired and now we're doing all these things, and we need the space. We have a lot of stuff outside, we had that tornado came through and we had a shed damage, we had soffit damage in our house. The shed hit my car, because I had nowhere to put my car, so these things are all outside now, another reason why we'd like to have this garage. And so even though there'll be three buildings on the property, we still meet all the other accessory building requirements. So our rear yard area with all three buildings is less than ten percent. We have a nice sized lot, it's a hundred feet wide by four hundred feet deep. The primary, it meets the primary square, less than the primary square footage, so I included all those in your package, those calculations. So all the accessory buildings added up are less than the house, even though the house is just over two thousand, you know, in the mid-two thousand square feet. It's not a huge house. We didn't build a huge house, we built something that was enough for us. And we meet the height requirement, we had to go two more feet off the property line to get an extra foot, but it's a low pitch, eight twelve garage. We'll do the six foot eleven attic storage up top. We do want stairs to go up there, being a woodworker, he's got wood, he wants to store up there, be able to carry it up conveniently, otherwise we would have done a pull downstairs. But that's kind of important to have that extra storage space for that. So that's the main reason, and then I just put the purposes of each building, just to understand what we're doing. So the original garage that was on the property when we bought it, he's currently using for woodworking, but it's totally not enough space. So that's gonna be more luthier, music instruments, electronics, workshop. The shed that we purchased is gonna be my she-shed, so that's where I'm gonna do my art and also put my garden stuff. If you had a chance to go on the property, I've done a lot of landscaping and that's all been my work. I've put in all the trim and all the plants and all the mulch every year, I'm the yard person, so that shed will be my garden and she-shed. And then the new garage will be the storage space that we need so desperately with all that stuff, the garage space. And then the woodworking shop will move into that space, in the, kind of, there'll be like two spaces in that garage. So that's kind of the summary for what we're asking for.
How big is the shed again?
The shed that we added is twelve by sixteen.
You're taking down a shed, yes, they are.
But there's a really old decrepit shed that we've been trying to take down since we moved out, yeah, the little eight by ten. It is, it's horrid, I wanna get rid of it. It's horrid. And it's the one I'm using now for my garden shed, so.
There you go.
It's funny, she's talking and I can only hear that.
Yeah, me too, I'm like.
I mean, my deafness is like.
It sounds like there's a faucet on, you know, when that's going in.
Okay, so you guys stay there, this is gonna be an easy question. Not question, I'm gonna open up public comment. Anybody? Please. Okay, closed public comment, thank you, I have to do it, technical. So there's no way we could, like, attach this big garage to another garage?
There's a electrical line going through the middle of the property.
Perfect.
So we have the existing garage on one side and this garage is on the other side.
And what else is over there?
The septic field, yeah. And we have utilities running, when they built the house, they ran electric down one side, gas down the middle and water on the other side, so we're we can't just arbitrarily place things. So, we're, we can't just arbitrarily place things.
Right now, there's three sheds, right?
Yes, the old decrepit shed that we've been...
What are you, you're trying to have another garage and a barn?
No, no.
No, just a garage.
Nope.
You're gonna build a garage.
So, there's an old shed that's going away and we're adding a building. So, there's, there'll be three buildings total.
So, you got your original garage.
So, that, the one that's farther to the road, it's just on a pallet?
Yes, that's the new shed that we bought during Covid.
Right, I mean... Can't you attach that to the other shed?
You might be able to, but the, their ma- the manufacturing of the materials is slightly different. The colors mismatched. It would look kind of arbitrary to attach it and...
That's...
The door placement and everything wouldn't be right. It would be, we'd lose something in that functionality.
Looked like you just purchased that shed and you should have known that there's, you can't have three sheds.
That's true.
Exterior or, uh, auxiliary buildings.
Yeah, it, it was, it wasn't planned.
Right.
It was, that was the unplanned difficulty because we couldn't get the garage built.
Couldn't you add that shed that's on that pallet to your new shed, to, to your new garage?
Like on the side?
Make it one versus three?
The biggest problem with that is it's my garden shed and all my gardens are up by the house. And this new garage is gonna be 200 feet or more away. And so for me to be going back and forth...
Well, it's, it's a ways right now from those raised beds.
I know, but I'm using a different shed from my garden shed. Like, that, that's, that's the, that's like the farthest. I didn't want to have to use that, but I have to obviously keep it to three buildings, so.
Man, I could, the, 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 the shed that's on a pallet is movable, so I just... I don't, you just get rid of it and build enough space in this garage.
Well, again, that's not ideal. My she-shed is not gonna go, I can't be in his space.
I'm just saying...
Like, that's not gonna work.
Re-accessory buildings is not...
But he's gonna be in the new garage and you take over the existing original garage and then get rid of the shed.
They're getting rid of one of the sheds, the 8 by 10.
No, get rid of the new shed.
We'll just not talk about the 8 by 10 because the 8 by 10 is going away and that's not counted in this request. What I'm requesting is that we keep the 12 by 16 shed that we bought during Covid to handle that situation. I don't really wanna get rid of it because you spent a lot of money on it and I wanna use it for my hobbies and my space. That's the only space I have outside. And so I can't incorporate into his garage because that would defeat the purpose of having the separate building for my activities. And I, moving it far away from all the gardening is really not ideal. Like, that's really difficult for me to be hauling all that stuff back and forth as I'm working, so... If I were to attach it, I, I'd attach it to the old garage first, but that's, again, not ideal because the materials are slightly different. And so it's still gonna look like two buildings, no matter how you connect it.
But it'd be cheaper than getting rid of it.
It would be cheaper than getting rid of it, maybe, maybe.
Do we gotta move utilities to do that? Or, you know, we're not sure.
There's no utilities in this mobile one?
That's right.
There's not, and there won't be, but there's utilities underground. You know, there's things that have to be considered in moving buildings around.
But you see what we're trying to do is try to help you, you know, keep everything that you want without giving you three.
I understand.
Right.
I understand, but I, I feel like attaching those two buildings is arbitrary. They're still both there and they still look like two separate buildings.
But they're attached and if they're one versus two, then you would only have two detached versus three.
That'd be correct.
What do your neighbors think? Are they opposed or... I mean, they didn't say anything yet, but I'm just curious.
Right, the neighbor on the one side has got a very large lot and so he, there's nothing in the vicinity of any of our buildings. And the neighbor on the other side, um, hasn't said anything to us. And of course, we're putting the big garage opposite of the yard from him. So, I think we're not really causing any issue. In fact, moving the existing shed might cause that neighbor more issue because it, his garage is right there. So, if I have to attach it to the old garage, it's gonna crowd him a little bit more.
I guess, I guess it is. It's basically self-created because you bought that shed knowing that only two accessory buildings should be on a property. So, you up three right now?
In a way, but we wanted to build the garage and couldn't build the garage.
Yeah, but you violated the ordinance when you bought that shed.
Uh, no, we got an approved building permit. Again, the assumption was to be, uh, removing that old shed, which we haven't been able to because we don't, I mean, it is on the permit that we were gonna remove the old shed. We just haven't been able to yet because we don't have the storage space that we need. We thought it would be enough and it's not. So, that's still the plan.
But the permit said, then you still have three buildings.
With this garage, we would have three buildings.
Is that what the permit said?
Sorry, there's a permit for the shed on that.
Oh, the, for the shed?
For the shed.
Oh, okay.
We were gonna remove the old shed.
Oh, you were, why didn't you remove the old shed?
And we just did that kind of recently.
Couple of years ago.
So, yeah, that shed, the intention has always been to tear that shed down.
But you didn't... When you got the permit for this, by this mobile shed, you were supposed to take the other shed down?
That's correct. That's correct. And once we moved out here, we found we couldn't do it. We didn't have enough, still enough space.
Yeah, but you were, you were supposed to buy the permit to remove that shed.
Yes.
Yes.
Our intention is, is always...
Which it was, it will be removed.
Oh, when you did...
Then he's saying you'll still have three buildings.
When you got the permit for this mobile shed, let's call it, it said remove the other shed, right?
Yes.
But you didn't do it.
But that's correct. It has not been removed yet.
And now you're asking us for variance for three sheds when you didn't do the other shed?
Correct.
With the building permit on that.
We're asking for three buildings in order to, for this garage to be, for the, this garage to be built, yes. In which case, we would have enough space. The old shed goes away.
It hasn't gone away yet.
That's correct.
It was supposed to go away.
Yes.
Due to our hardship, it has not gone away. We're sorry.
I think you guys just got lucky between building inspectors at the time because that shed would be gone right now.
Our insurance company wants it gone, too. Like, I, there's no intention of it keeping it.
That shed would be gone before your new house garage is built. I can tell you that.
Okay. And then I'm gonna have more stuff outside because I don't have anywhere to put that stuff.
But you bought a shed to, to tear that shed down. I mean, I, I don't...
I understand.
You promised the township you were gonna do something. You didn't. And now you're telling us that you're not willing to attach that shed to a, a building and be compliant.
It's not desirable. That's correct.
It's doable.
But either is three accessory buildings on every single piece of property in Clay Township is not desirable for any of us. Do we all want it? Yep, everybody wants it.
Sorry, I, I think I have a question, though. So, is it, maybe it's a building inspector question. I'm not sure. So, if we were to, sorry, is it allowed to attach a shed with no foundation to a building that has a foundation? Is that it?
Something he would have to answer, but in a safe token, if he really wanted this new garage, it could be done.
Could be done.
He wanted the garage.
Money is no cost and aesthetics is no matter.
That's us.
It's the spirit of the two-building thing. I don't, I still don't understand why two buildings is the rule. What, what, do we, do we understand the spirit of what creates the two-building rule?
What's a limit? So, if every, just picture yourself, even though you're on the mainland, right? I mean, a lot of people have deep yards.
Right.
So, then you got shed, garage, shed in every yard.
Pretty much.
And then it turns into something that's not aesthetically pleasing to anyone who would wanna move here. So, that's why there are ordinances in place and that's why we're here to obviously determine if it's gonna continue. You know, what's the hardship, if there isn't a hardship? So, what Brian's proposing and, and the others is if you were able to connect it somehow, make it a two-building, then you're all set.
They wouldn't be here.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
So, even if you can somehow, and I, I don't, I don't know what it looks like right now, so I'm just kind of thinking out loud. If you could somehow face one of them in the other direction, I mean, if you have two doors, it doesn't matter as long as they're connected. You don't have to connect the doors. You know, you mentioned that the doors are not obviously the same and that's okay, but if you turned one one-way and one the other way, even L-shaped or something, I don't know what your property, you know, can, can hold because you talked about all the utilities and the differences in where they are. But there's gotta be something that you could figure out that would connect those two in order for you guys to build that garage and eliminate that 8 by 10 shed.
Well, not eliminate it, but attach it to it.
No, the 8 by 10 is already... Yeah, that's gotta go. That's the one that should have been gone already.
Right, okay. Not the, not the mobile one.
Correct.
Yeah, I want nothing more than to have that 8 by 10 gone. Been wanting to get rid of that for a while.
It's hard to see from the street.
Yeah, you can't see it from the street at least, but I look at it every time I look out my door and it's...
So, does that make sense that, I mean, if you could somehow, you know, incorporate the two, even if they were, you know, corner to corner and they were together?
So, what, what considers them attached? What are the methods that could, are?
You attach them. You attach them physically, either with the roof structure or attach wall to wall.
Will they need a foundation for that shed now?
Probably.
I mean, the current...
For that shed, you need a foundation anyways. 16 by 10, it's not legal anyways.
I believe it fits in the, oh, sorry, not to argue, but I do believe it fits the ordinance of size as a shed without a foundation.
Without a fond- Gary? Does the 16 by 12 fit the ordinance without a foundation?
About a 10 by 12. 10 by 12 without a foundation, anything bigger than that?
It changes from what zoning and what's building. And once we reach 200 square feet, then it becomes a building, uh, issue. But per the building code, anything less than 600 square feet doesn't have to have a frost-protected, frost-protected foundation. Uh, so it could be, you know, just match what's there now. You would want them to be consistent with each other. Uh, but it's doubtful that even the one shed has any depth to a foundation. Maybe on slab or a thickened slab or, I don't know. Uh, you'd have to investigate that. But it would be wise to match those two together. Uh, whatever one is, the other one can be, but you add them both together and then they're not going to be 600 square feet. Uh, so the, the frost-protected footing wouldn't be a requirement.
And there's a window there. See, that's the main, that's the, that's the she-shed.
You can move a door.
There's a she-shed there, it's the existing one.
I just... It, it can be done. I'm all for the new building. That's great. I get it. It's a limitation with power lines, septic field, totally get it, but I don't get why we need to have three. If they're not willing to attach it, I don't...
Yeah, we didn't say we weren't willing. It's just not desirable for us because the connecting them, the awkwardness of it is...
The materials of the house and the existing garage aren't the same either.
The what?
The, the, the materials of the house and the garage aren't the same.
The three buildings would be close to the same. The intention is copper roof and the brown siding, so...
I get it. Like I said, anything can be done. It's just I'd prefer you to, to make only two. I mean, just like the attic thing, we're gonna come up with something different. But if all of us had three accessory buildings, I'd love to have three in my house.
Listen, I'd like to have one. I have a garage, that's it.
I mean, technically, even if we attach them, there's, there're gonna be three buildings.
Nope, I need two.
They're attached, but...
So...
They're still the same three buildings. Okay, I, I understand.
You know what I mean? It's considered two.
I, I do, I do.
But I understand what you're saying is that you're still the same building space, but you have two same...
I would also argue the balance of the property. I think having the three buildings separate creates a better balance of the property. Um, we've got architecture clearly. We have custom home. We've matched these buildings together. We've upgraded the siding and the roofs on these accessory buildings to match. So, they all look cohesive and good together. And kind of spacing them out on the yard and still having plenty of yard left. I mean, we're using less than 10% of the backyard. We've put a very relatively small footprint of home on this lot, which kind of, I guess, that causes a problem for us. I can't build the sized garage I would really love. But we've kept it underneath that. We've, you know, like I said, it's, it's less than 10%. We love 25% of space, but now I'm limited by, because I built a smaller home on this lot. I can't use 25%. I'm using less than 10.
Can you build a bigger garage?
No, we can't. To meet the square footage, we have the biggest garage, uh, that we can.
The calculations are...
Based on the existing square footage of the house.
Okay, so, here's my question.
I could go for a variance on that to make it a bigger garage. It's still the, the three, three detached structures.
So, I have a question for you. You, you mentioned that you're retired. So, you have a business on the island?
Nope.
So, you don't sell your woodworking and you don't sell your art or anything like that?
No, not so far.
I'm, I did the craft show at the Lions Hall.
Nothing illegal about any of that.
But I didn't sell anything.
I'm not, I'm just asking, you know? I know, it's my business, too. I'm just, I'm wondering, like... Well, I'm wondering because, you know, I was just trying to think, like, you know, is there some type of mixed use, you know? And, and, I mean, who knows, right? Um, I mean...
Yes.
I'm in real estate, Brian, so I have to ask.
I get it, but...
So, um...
There is. So, for example, in drying wood, um, that needs to be compartmentalized in order to be able to dry the wood, things like that.
I, I make charcuterie.
Oh, he can, he can do those.
I can hook you up with nice boards.
You wanna sell me a board? So, is it feasible, this is just a question, that you could eliminate some of your things to consolidate then and not have to have such large buildings?
I don't think the size...
I'm just, I'm asking a question, Brian, just a minute.
So, right now, I'm in an 8 by 10 studio in the house, which really should be a closet. And I don't have enough space to do the things that I wanna do in there. So, I need the 12 by 16 shed and then I would incorporate all my garden tools that are currently in the decrepit shed that's going away into that shed as well. So, that space is very, gonna be very well filled out.
Okay.
And same thing with the others. I mean, our cars are outside. We have a Kubota tractor outside.
But you're gonna put those in the garage.
Which we could put in the garage. Um, you know, firewood is outside, not under any cover. I mean, there's kayaks. There's, you know, endless things that should be in the garage. We have things down in the crawl space, like our camping equipment. So, then when we need it, he's running down on the mechanic's slide thing to get around in a 30-inch crawl space to pick stuff up.
I live in a condo. You preaching to the player here.
So, you know, we got, there's, there's no, we're not, it's not that, the square footage is...
So, can you, can you add storage in your, um, in your garage, like rafters, so that it's not a pull-down, so that you can put some of that away, so it's not...
That's in the design. It, it's stairs, the, the new garage will have stairs and 6'11" attic straight space.
It's in process.
That's what we're getting, we have to have this variance of place.
You just gotta get rid of one building.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Actually, two, right now.
Yes.
That's the whole thing.
Yes, you're correct, Joe. We gotta get rid of the old one.
Yes.
Could we postpone until they get rid of the old one?
No.
We just have to put that in.
Just make it the condition.
Now that it's on record, it'll be, it'll be letter sent, I'm sure.
You know, we could, we truly, it was just not feasible to build this garage because once the house finished and we had the flooding and the Covid and the wood prices and labor shortages, like, it was year after year of not me doing it. It's driving me nuts. Anyway, finally, we're there. Yes, we got a shed. In the meantime, my garage became this shed for some reason. But that thing wasn't free. I mean, it, it, it was a significant... But the thing wasn't free, I mean, it, it, it was a significant cost for us to suddenly put that shed there. We saved some storage unit cost, monthly cost, I suppose, by putting that there, but, you know, I'd rather not just throw away that money, it was, it was not.
I mean, I see things like that for sale all the time on Marketplace.
I know, but you don't have to get rid of it, all you have to do is attach it to the building.
Attach it.
Well, I mean, there's cost and project time in doing that as well.
But we can't get through this not self-created justification to prove it, so it's gonna be,
Back to that form we have to fill out.
Put it this way, we would have not purchased that shed and just built the garage if we didn't have all those things happen in all those years. We wouldn't have had that shed go up, and we would have been able to just build the garage.
So we're here today and, and you're in a better place and there's no flooding and, right?
We're ready to build.
So how about we sell that shed and we put, and then you get the garage?
But then I don't have the space that I need, that's the problem.
Build the garage bigger then.
Again, can't incorporate the, my art stuff in his garage, like, the, the space doesn't, it's not compatible with things that we do.
Separate it.
Why don't you take the original garage? And then let him build a bigger garage.
Okay, so let me, let me ask this, if those two buildings were attached, we're done. So then we don't even need to be here, and that, so that's what you're asking? So we have to spend the money to attach those?
It's one option for sure, it's one option for sure.
So I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Attaching, can they be attached by a walkway? I mean, like a pent enclosed, like, almost like a.
Like a breezeway.
I, I mean, it's probably not ideal to do that, but.
I mean, it's an option, right? So they're not door to door. Gary, can they be attached by a breezeway?
It would be simpler to move them closer together.
Just touch it.
And either from the walls together or.
It's wood, they can change the doors.
But they would have to re-roof to make it look like one and all that?
No.
No.
Just have to marry them together.
Will they have to put foundation under one?
Yep, they should match, so I don't know what's under one, but the other should match with.
That's, that's a lot of money to put the, pour the cement.
They could pour at the same time as they do the garage. Might be cheaper in bulk, the cement.
Not on the island.
Exactly, it's already gonna be.
At a time, and so it's like.
The amount of trucks that are gonna come over just to do the garage, it's, yeah.
And the cost.
That's a huge, huge amount of the cost of the garage is the cement work. So I'd, I'd rather leave the, the twelve by sixteen out in the pallet and connect it with some kind of breezeway or walkway or something along those lines, so.
But then it's gonna shift differently and that breezeway will disappear, you know, crack and it won't be.
When Gary's saying you can't.
Won't be worth the one you're paying for, basically.
Right, I would, I would do it that way.
And I think Gary's saying you can't do it.
We can attach it with flexible membrane.
I have the, we're both engineers, so we're both thinking about how we can make this happen without it being.
I mean, like Gary said.
We've been thinking about it for a while, trying to figure out what we would do, and it, it's a difficult problem to attach those two buildings, which is why we're here. Because I like the way they're positioned right now, we have parking spots in between the two buildings.
Height stuff.
So we're, we'd have to not only move, but then add cement and then add more gravel driveway in order to create that. So it's driving a lot of cost and that, the garage is already, like, way higher, more expensive than we originally wanted to spend, just because the, the current situation of the economy and the price of cement and everything else, so it's difficult.
Not to cut you off, but wouldn't it be easier to ask for a variance for, you have two bays in your garage, I'm assuming?
It's not a garage, it's an enclosed building that's a workshop.
No, no, your new garage.
Oh, the new garage, yeah.
Two bays, right?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be simpler to add a third bay, get a variance for that, and sell?
They don't need a variance for the garage.
They don't need a third bay variance?
Oh, they can build a hundred bay, as long as it's on a certain square foot.
And sell that shed, you're done.
So that would allow, on that particular garage, what, six feet?
I mean, even if you went like this and this way, then you got your space, he's got his space, and you don't have an outbuilding. I'm just thinking out loud.
That shed is less than four square feet. To add less than two hundred square feet to a thirty foot gap garage.
She wanted that she shed for herself and be separate from the rest, is that I think just what they were looking for.
She can be separate if she has a third bay. It's closed off from the other two.
It's about five feet of that garage, so you'd have to add five, six.
Yeah, but you're underneath your square footage of your, your property, you can add whatever you want, up to the twenty-five percent, so you can add the garage bigger. You can always make the garage bigger, you just can't have three or four accessory buildings.
You don't, what Brian's saying is you don't need a variance for the garage.
But our total square footage of the accessory buildings would exceed the house.
Not if you got rid of the shed.
If we add a full bay.
Not if you got rid of the shed.
That shed is only a hundred ninety-six square feet and the, the garage is thirty feet deep.
But you told us you were only at ten percent right now, so.
Of the area.
Of the backyard area.
Right, but the square footage of the house versus the square footage of the accessory buildings, we're trying to stay under that requirement. So if we added a full bay, it would be more square footage than the twelve by sixteen shed, so then we'd have to get a variance for that square footage.
Gary, can you help us out on that?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty much, but what they are proposing, what they have, they're right at the threshold. Anything bigger would require a variance, because then their accessories would be greater than the floor area of the main house. So, you know, that poses another issue, that now we have accessories that equate to be larger. And yeah, by eliminating a twelve by sixteen, what do you gain when you talk about it going across a forty foot building? I mean, you, you gained two feet, you didn't gain anything, and, and two feet is wrong. But you're not going to realize the benefits of doing that. So, yeah, there would be no option but to, coming for you again, for a variance to have accessories larger than the main. And then that conversation very well be, well, why don't you eliminate one of the sheds and then you're under, so I, I don't know.
I'd much rather see a variance for a bigger garage than a bunch of sheds.
They do all match.
So if you're, if your funding is tight, so tight that you're having a hard time with this, how are you going to get rid of the other shed? The one that you've, you already said you couldn't afford to get rid of because money was tight?
No, it wasn't money was tight, space was tight.
Space was tight.
So that, the, the old decrepit shed is my current garden shed.
Okay.
And all my garden tools are in there because my gardens are right there. So I'm already making an adjustment, moving that into the twelve by sixteen shed, because that's a lot farther away, and then the garage is even farther away. So if I take that functionality and put it in the garage, I'm going, I'm going way far away to get all my equipment to garden up at the house.
No, I'm sorry.
What's gonna go in the existing garage, the original garage?
The existing garage is, is a different type of workshop, he's got a lot of hobbies, and the existing garage has only a pedestrian door on it, so there's no, I can't roll carts in and out of the existing garage or hang tools in there, because it's not really set up that way, it's gonna be like a clean space for electronics and working on music instruments and things that he does, right? Cleaning, I mean, we got thirteen guitars and saxophones and four keyboards and, you know, he repairs all that stuff and friends' things, so a clean space is kind of necessary, and so the woodworking shop is moving into the new garage. And that, he can't intermix at an electronics shop and a woodworking space.
I, I think you misunderstood me, when you bought the new shed.
Yes.
You were told to get rid of the old shed.
Yes.
The new shed is bigger than the old shed.
Yes.
So you said you couldn't get rid of the old shed because of funding and COVID and.
No, just space, like, what happened was we moved, we got rid of our mainland house and moved to the island full time. So we had moved some stuff into storage, and I was really getting tired of paying the storage fees, so we got the new shed in order to get all that stuff out of storage and on our property. And so that took up all the space of the new shed. And so while I had wanted, my long-term intent was to use that for my garden shed, I couldn't take down the garden shed because I still needed that space too, with all the, and the boating stuff is in there, the life jackets, the paddles for the kayaks, yeah.
Because this is not the mainland house. When did you guys move, make this your mainland house?
This, this has been our primary house since we built it in twenty eighteen, and we've been there full time since twenty twenty, and we sold the mainland house in twenty twenty-one when we retired.
And that's why all that stuff got shifted?
Yeah. So we put stuff into storage for a period of time.
They didn't tear down the old sheds because they, they were.
Storing everything.
Storing everything, because they sold the mainland house.
I mean, you can see what we're trying to do with the property, we want it to look nice, that, that old shed has no business being there, so that, that's not gonna be.
I promise, we intended to tear that down.
But life happened, they actually ended up selling, and then they're like, oh my God, what do we do? I can see it happening.
We had piles of stuff in our living room, like.
We had, we have a second bedroom upstairs with boxes piled in it, and I finally got that taken care of, you know, it's just been a journey.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, feel.
Is it, is it the two of you then that live there?
Just us.
So. I just, I think your simplest solution is to attach those sheds.
And then still be able to keep the shed and your space?
I can't see, and, and I, I'm just speaking for myself, I, I can't see a difficulty in having stuff when there's just another added building to have more things, right? So I have things too, but I can only have enough within my means of my condo and where I live, you know, I mean, I walk to the shed at the end of the road, I mean, so I'll tell you, I live at the Taschmoo condo, so there's a shed there, we don't even have electricity in it, but that's where all of our gardening stuff is. So I've created space in my garage to put gardening tools, just so I don't have to keep walking back and forth, so it's just a matter of making it work, right? So we're trying to help you make it work, but we can't physically, or, I mean, consciously say that it's okay for three buildings just because there's more stuff.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, am I speaking out of turn? I feel like, you know, I don't wanna be the only one, I mean, you guys might disagree.
I can't see any justification.
And we have to, we have to be able to present that, is, is my point, it's not something.
I'd rather that be a, the third building a gazebo than a shed that's not attached. You know what I mean? Because technically, if they wanted to put a gazebo out by the water, it's not attached structure, but in the same token, I don't think Craig Township really want, you know, we really need to get into the three buildings. I mean, there's a lot of us that have property that would love to have three buildings and, have to tear down stuff to get two, or attach it, or build bigger, or build bonus rooms, or build, you know.
And I'm sure that you guys know, that you live out here, I mean, I've been out here for thirty years, so I've, I've seen things come and go and move and, and things like that, and there are a lot of contractors out here, so if we start getting into three buildings per larger lots, then all these contractors don't have to pay for storage for their equipment, they want a shed. Now, they want to store their property on their, you know, their, their.
Equipment on their yard.
In their yards.
Is there something that we can do with this discussion so that we can move ahead with the garage in parallel with the solution that comes up with making sure there's only one other building? Because we're at a point now where we'd really like to start this garage, we've been waiting for seven years now to, to get it rolling, so.
And then the motion would say that the existing shed has to be removed, and the other shed has to be attached to the garage before you can put footings in the, for the garage.
Before footings?
Or at the same time.
You, you didn't even remove the other shed last time we asked you to.
Believe me, I wanted to.
And I wanted you to, but you didn't, that's the same, how are we gonna trust you to do it again? With the five thousand dollar bond that we go in there and tear it down, and then the lawyers fight for ten years and you get to use it for ten years? That's how it goes. It's not, you've already proven that you're not gonna tear it down, so.
Yeah.
As a builder, we're all gonna want, I, I want three, if, if this goes tonight, I'm putting three in my house tomorrow. And I guarantee you, everybody will have three.
That's my point.
And I know you need it, I, I'm not saying that you don't, and I want you to have it, but you're not willing to.
If you have it, he's gonna have it.
You're, you're not willing to, to, to give a little bit.
Yeah, again, I didn't say we weren't willing to give a little bit.
I know as a builder, and I've looked at your garage, and I, and I've seen it, but what I'm saying is, as a builder, I can't just throw a third shed out in my house right now, I, I mean, I'd love to.
And he's on the back road, so.
Well, I mean, I have seven acres, I get it, but you know, I totally, I want you to have the biggest, whatever you can afford, that's not even the, the issue. I'd rather give you more square footages, so you have one building, maybe two buildings, but three storage sheds, I mean, ask for a gazebo, maybe that would be better than you not wanting to attach that, there's, there's ways to not come in front of you, wherever the camera is, just figure the way out not to come in front of the ZBA, and the only way, and you want to keep the shed, is attach it to the other. Yes, it comes with a cost, and I'm sorry about that. You know, your builder, whoever, should have guided you that, hey, you know what, if you attach it, it's one, one building, you know what I mean? Or extend, or sell that one, put a bigger addition on your existing original garage, and then build yours, I get the square foot, I, I get the percentages, but by saying I'm not willing to do that, it's not helping us.
Right.
You know, I, I want you to have it.
Again, we've never said that we're not willing to do it, we've been racking our brain to figure out how to do it that makes sense, that would look aesthetically.
I get it.
Aesthetically appropriate and still function with the way the pedestrian doors and the way the garage doors is, I can't just turn it any which way.
But remember, we're here for a reason, so we're here so that the township isn't just look like a bunch of sheds, right? So whether it's a beautiful shed, or whether it's, you know, somebody else, they might think theirs is beautiful and we might not.
I was just gonna say, you guys have a different mindset on placement, I get that, but another guy might be like, look at all the sheds he's got over there, he's got a garage, another shed, I wanna go, I want three.
Yeah, and then who knows, theirs might be orange, we can't tell what color to do.
You know, we're gonna put another one at the middle channel.
I mean, it's funny, but people do that, and that's why we're here, so, you know, I mean, you heard Brian, and as funny as it sounded, if you get three, he wants three, and he's probably not kidding, so, I mean, he's got enough equipment that I'm sure he could use three.
Right.
You know, and, and I, I just, we have a format that we have to follow, and it has to be above board and to make sure that everybody's getting treated fairly, and if you get three, everyone gets three.
Not necessarily, I get, I get.
Pretty much.
But it opens up a bigger can of worms with three, and I know people probably have them.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
I, I knew it was coming, right? I think I do, but not legally.
Yeah.
Not legally, and then you, by trying to pull a permit, are getting caught in the catch twenty-two of it, I get it, and, and, and it's not getting caught, you're doing the right thing, right?
Yeah, we're trying to do the right thing.
Exactly. And I'm not saying that, that you're not, you know, I, it's just, I, I, I think either eliminating that shed or attaching it to your new, new garage or your new, or your existing.
Existing garage, yeah.
Garage, somehow you could make that work and have everything that you wanted unfortunately attached, and make it two structures versus the third.
Okay.
And I think, Gary, if we were to say they have to attach, you're obviously watching the, and approving as they go along and doing the rough, you're not gonna approve the rough unless they have the, the existing shed, right? Okay.
So as far as the stipulations that we could state to you, like you said before, you know, obviously, we want your, that existing shed gone.
Yep.
Because you said that you were gonna remove it.
Absolutely.
And Gary now is obviously gonna have that. As far as what he allows you, if you say, you know what, build the garage in the same time that other one has to be attached, it has to be done, you know what I mean?
He's gonna be watching.
That's his to, to, to do, I'm not gonna sit here and put a stipulation, they might, but it's gotta be attached first, I, I guess that was rude for me to say like that, but it's gonna be a stipulation that that has to be attached, or you can't build this existing garage, you have to make arrangements, you're gonna have to show Gary how you're gonna do that and when it's gonna be done. As far as a timeline, that's. As far as a timeline, that's up to the board. I don't know about a timeline because I know the story.
When they're doing the concrete work for the garage, they could probably, and they're doing the footings for the garage. They could do the footings at the same time for the shed and set that shed right on there. If that works for you, that would be my, if I was doing it, that's exactly how I would do it.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to do it separately. If I have to pour cement, I want to do it all at the same time.
That's what I'm saying. I want it all done at the same, and then they can move that shed and set it right on the new foundation. Right? So that's the way I would do it. And then Gary's going to see that when he's doing the rough. He's going to see. He's going to know his.
But he's got to be.
He's okay holding us accountable.
Okay.
That's what I'm getting at. You're going to be held accountable this time. You know what I mean? You you might have caught the transition, COVID, the billing official switching.
Yeah.
And it just fell through the red tape, I guess. Fine. But in the same token, we've had other people tear down stuff, you know what I mean? Because.
Fair enough.
Yeah. But in the same token, I don't. I'm not trying to be a.
All right, so we're going to go back and figure out how to have two buildings. And and we'll take your suggestions in in mind and we'll work with Gary to figure out how to make that happen, what what makes sense.
Then you don't even need us. I mean.
Yeah, and so then.
And then you would, yeah.
I I will say, like, I I respect very much the work that you guys are doing. And if there's a rule that you need to work to. I will say I still don't quite understand the rule, the purpose of the rule and what it, how it was made to begin.
Who made the rule?
Yeah.
I would go to planning and ask them.
Yeah, why why two versus three versus whatever?
Yeah, it's not. Yeah, we we can't change it.
I guess it's the planning, the planning board.
But again, you think you do and so does the guy with the orange building.
I understand.
So it's not, and and I haven't seen your buildings, so I'm sure they're beautiful, but everyone's.
Their house is awesome.
It's it's, um, you know, what do they call that? The perception is in the eye of beholder or the beauty is behi- in the eye of the beholder, right? So, I mean, you know, I could paint my door green and think it looks fabulous and my neighbors go, oh, God, you know, but.
My door is green.
My door used to be.
I'll give you, for instance, in front of the ZBA, a gentleman was asking for a boathouse. Not enclosed, open boathouse. And one of the neighbors was complaining that it would block his view. But when you sat in the guy's driveway, all he looked at is his third shed. And I told him, I said, well, if your thirty legal shed wasn't there, you could see right through all of it.
Yeah.
Right? So what I'm getting at, everyone has to kind of get along in a community, but in the same, just because one person has it and another person does, or vice versa, you know what I mean? It's just one of those things where people are see differently is what I'm, I guess I'm trying to say, you know. And when they see three structures and we allow that, that is a lot different can of worms, you know what I mean? Like you saw the just the the case before you is going to change things. The fence is something that's unique because we've never had.
We never.
Carla knows all about fences, so. So what what I'm saying is it's it's
different.
Changes, you know what I mean? I'm I'm not saying we're more lenient or tough, but you can make this a two structure. It's just you have to do that.
Yeah.
You know, if it was something that you couldn't and it was unique and you had a canal or you had power lines, that's why I asked you.
We do have.
You you have certain things that would meet a unique uniqueness characteristic. Septic field, because you can't go near that septic field. We know that. Power lines can't build, you know, underneath those power lines. We understand that. And and the location of that. But in the same token, you can attach that building. You just are saying, I don't want to.
I don't want to spend the money.
I I and 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 the money, it stinks, right? We are not allowed to to take that in consideration in any of our decisions, right? Good or bad, even if we said, well, tear the existing garage down.
Yeah.
It's not our cost, right? You know, it's your, you have to weigh the odds of that decision, I do.
Okay.
But that shed has to come down.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, we've never.
So what are we doing? Are we?
You guys have to make a motion to deny and.
I make a motion to deny based off the fact that they're not allowed to have three buildings and we won't, I I I don't wish to.
This is contrary to the contrary to the ordinance.
To the ordinance.
And then they know what they have to do to get that second and a half building.
Who's second?
Who's second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right.
So I would like to see pictures of.
Of the connection.
Hang on, hang on. All in favor? Or hang on. We'll do a roll call. We'll do a roll call.
All right.
We're going to, there's a motion on the table to deny. And there's a second.
So is it a yes or a no? Say yes.
Yes.
All right, so, um, Margie, I say yes. Chris is not here. Carla?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Bonnie's not here and Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
Work with Gary on as far as, you know, you're going to have to figure out what's on your existing garage footing wise and try to match that as close as possible. There's many different ways to to do footings on that.
And I really would love to draw back pictures.
So there's many different ways you could do.
I would want to see pictures of.
Of the connection.
Yeah.
It's a it's a beautiful home. You guys have a great space.
You know, honestly, I don't know. I really need to go.
There's multiple different ways of connecting buildings. I get you. A loophole. I I understand that.
All right, so we'll we'll figure out the loophole and the way to make it look good.
Gary's a thorough.
Gary, Gary won't never let you come in front of us with three.
That's right. Have a good night, you guys. Thank you. Thanks for bearing with us.
All right, so report for planning commission. So.
Oh, with the phone tower or something.
No, I'm just going in order on my notes.
It is. This is on it.
On it.
I don't have it. I don't have it. Oh, I'm sorry. You're, I'm sorry. So you're unfinished business. So we still have the the cell tower coming next month. That's still, is that adequate for me to say that, right? Again?
Yeah.
I thought we were we already did that motion.
It wasn't on the agenda.
No, it was to June, wasn't it?
I thought it was June.
All right, so I I would like to entertain a motion to postpone that cell tower till July meeting. And I need a motion second for that.
I'll second the postponement.
That good for you?
Brian?
I don't want to make the motion.
Oh, I did.
Okay, Carla made the motion. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is the lawyer going to be there?
Yes, lawyer will be there.
Okay, so what was the decision for this?
To deny.
Deny it.
Deny it. And I'm saying, what was the reason?
It's contrary to the.
It's contrary to the ordinance.
And it was self-created.
I was just going to say it is self-created.
All right, so report for the committee, planning commission. As far as what I've heard, Chris has stepped down from planning, which would take him off of the ZBA as our representative for the planning. I was hoping he would stay for the alternate, but maybe I already didn't talk to him in time. So we are, don't know what's going on with that. I'll find out tomorrow on the planning, who our rep is on the planning now.
So what do you mean? Is it going to be one of us?
Chris can stay on the ZBA, but he he won't be, he'll be an alternate at best right now.
Chris is going to be an alternate. We're going to. She's going to, should everybody?
That's right.
Well, we need a, we, because we have to bring in a planning representative.
Why wouldn't one of us go to the planning?
That's why we already have.
I want to get paid.
Is John DeBoer?
I don't know if he's on, I don't think he's on planning. He's on the trustees, but I don't think he's on plan. Is he on planning?
Trustee.
Oh, is he trustee?
Do we get paid for being a trustee? Because I would like to be one.
So, um.
So anyways, we're, the next meeting. I.
Yeah, it's been thundering.
We can't ask who they need to bring someone to us, take two, you know? All right, so anyways, I'm hoping Chris would stay on for the alternate and we would then bring in the planning commission representative. Understand, I guess? All right. Anything else that we need to review? Public comment?
I'll say that the cell tower sounds like they're looking to move it.
Oh, wouldn't that be nice?
On the same parcel, but move it. And I haven't seen any of the information about it yet. But that's primarily why it was tabled today, because they're working on drawings to move it.
Okay, good.
Was it supposed to be for tonight, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's, you know, Cindy, you know, I I asked her, I said, is the lawyer going to be here tonight? She's like, no, they they postponed it. I'm like, I didn't know that. So I thought, okay, so this is why we have to do another motion to postpone it for another month. Okay. Perfect. Any other public comments? Close public comments? Someone's got a.
Motion adjourned.
There we go.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
I'm supposed to fill this out.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I'll stay with you. Yeah, for sure.
We all have to sign it, too.
So before you guys leave.